6:30, we call a special work session meeting of October 17, 2016, order. We do have a forum, public forum. Individuals may address the city council about items on the agenda or not on the agenda. Speakers are required to state their name and address for council records and leave remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council. Generally, the city council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time, but may place the matter, the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer to matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to place on the upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Good evening.
Name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Rich Andreessen. I live up on Outing, 6553 Andreessen Bay Drive Northeast, Reamer 56672. The reason I'm here is that Toastmasters is in Little Falls. Five years ago, a couple of us were talking about Toastmasters and thought that we wanted a club that focused more on humor than a regular club. So we thought if we could get a couple people from the Brainerd Clubs and a couple people from the St. Cloud area and a dozen people from Little Falls, we'd have a good club. And it took a little longer than we thought it was going to take, but that's pretty much what happened. We finished the last couple of years, have 20 members, which is a success. Toastmasters is an international nonprofit educational organization. We had a club meeting, we helped each other learn how to speak and lead and thus gain self-confidence to go out and do whatever we're going to do. Some of us do it for fun, some of us do it for business, some of us do it for politics, some of us do it for business. If you look back in history, there are many people that worked Toastmasters and they all say that they got a lot out of it, whether they be an astronaut or a Prime Minister of Canada or Australia, it's all the same. They gained something from being there. I think that Toastmasters helps a community just by being there and being available to help people learn how to communicate better and to lead better. Every organization in town needs that, communication and leadership, and we teach that. So if anybody, if you know of anybody that needs either of those, send them to Toastmasters. We meet on the first and third, Thursdays of each month, over at the backside of the hospital, from 6:30 to 8:00. Everybody's welcome to come and see what we're doing and we might even ask you to say, might ask you to introduce yourself, please. So we're celebrating five years in Little Falls now and we plan on a lot more years. Thank you very much for your time and let you get on with your meeting.
Thank you. Is that AM or PM?
PM.
PM.
Okay.
From Outing, I wouldn't be here at 6:30 in the morning.
Just trying to get you to stay the night in our hotels.
I do that, too. I do that.
Good.
Because it's too far to go back home at night.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. And for those guests that are here that don't know why I'm going to talk about stuff that's not related to city business, it is because Colonel St. Salvert Camp Ripley has given the privilege every year of speaking for 30 minutes, actually on the agenda, to about non-city delivery service business. This is by Bruce Fein, constitutional lawyer, personal friend, and former attorney of mine. Countering violent extremism and government extremism. There is a simple and cost-free strategy to diminish or slash the incidence of violent extremism in the United States and government extremism, including the initiation of gratuitous wars not in self-defense that kill, injure, displace millions in Afghanistan, Iraq, Syria, Yemen, Somalia, Libya, and against the Islamic State of Iraq and the Levant, ISIL, authorizing the president to play prosecutor, judge, jury, and executioner to kill American citizens not engaged in hostilities based on secret, uncorroborated evidence, imprisoning alleged enemy combatants at Guantanamo Bay indefinitely without accusation and charge in violation of constitutional due process, invoking the state's secrets privilege to deny judicial redress to government kidnappings, torture, or assassinations, and providing material assistance, including weapons and money, to unpopular governments that terrorize or oppress their populations, for instance, Egypt, Saudi Arabia, Libya, the Gulf States, Iraq, and Afghanistan. Nothing excites extremism more than government lawlessness. For example, Justice Louis D. Brandeis explained in Olmsted v. United States, 1928, decency, security, and liberty alike demand that government officials shall be subjected to the same rules of conduct that are commands to the citizen. In a government of laws, existence of the government will be perilous if it fails to observe the law scrupulously. Our government is the potent, the omnipresent teacher, for good or for ill, it teaches the whole people by its example. Crime is contagious. If the government becomes a lawbreaker, it breeds contempt for law. Brandeis was prophetic. It would cost the United States nothing to end assassinations of American citizens not accused of crime. It would save the United States hundreds of millions of dollars to close the Guantanamo Bay prison and to put on trial in federal courts any detainees reasonably suspected of providing material assistance to an international terrorist organization. And I'm out of time, but I do want to share this information. In a 30-year span, the United States--
Time's up, Robin. Thank you.
Killed 1,323,703 Muslims. Most Americans still think--
Anyone else wish to speak?
They hate us for our freedoms.
Right now, move on to regular council information items. Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail Design. Greg?
Yeah, yeah. One of the items on your agenda work session here tonight is just to kind of discuss the Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail. As you can see on the slide behind me here, the Camp Ripley State Trail is one that they call it the missing, like so. South of us, we've got the Central Lakes, the Lake Wobegon. North of us, you've got the Paul Bunyan Trail, and you really have this stretch in the middle. Couple of years back, I believe it's three years now, the legislature actually, in their bonding bill, had $1.7 million for the DNR slated for the Camp Ripley Trail. Now, there's a number of steps that actually have to go through in order to construct that. One is a master plan, which they've completed, but now they're looking at feasibility of various routes. They don't have an exact route identified, but they're looking at various options. This past year, Morrison County's been working with the DNR for preliminary engineering on some of the routes that they're looking at, and the DNR is actually reimbursing the county for their efforts on that. So I'd like to work with the DNR to do the same thing through Little Falls, maybe even take it a step further and actually do the design and the construction of it. So it would be essentially using those funds that were slated for it to actually get something constructed here in Little Falls. And I just wanted to see what the council's perspective is on that before we go ahead and pull that memorandum together and get that agreement, get that slated. I will say they've done a lot of work. The first phase, if you will, for the bike trail would be on the west side. And again, this is just a line, there's nothing that's finalized in it, but they have decided the west side would be the bike trail and the east side from the Sioux Line up to 18th Street there would be for the motorized portion of the trail. Just because there's not enough right-of-way on one or the other side of the river, they had to split it in this stretch. So at some point, you know, north of town, it may come back together in terms of being motorized and non-motorized in close proximity, but right now, just because of everything that's on the west side, they weren't able to find a corridor wide enough for both stretches. So we'd be looking at taking off from Central Island here and then heading through town until we connect up to the city limits. Any questions?
So are you looking for support--
Correct.
--from the council to allow you to work on that?
To work on that agreement with the DNR, yeah. And then we would obviously bring that agreement to the council to make sure that that's something we want to enter into, but I'd rather spend their money than our money.
So are you asking for time and money? Are we asking for time?
It would be time, yep.
Well, everything I've seen about it, and you know, I've come in late in the game, but everything I've seen, it looks like it'd be great, both for the community.
Correct.
I'd be 100% in favor, but I think, you know, the interest was shown by the city at the last meeting, trails meeting.
Right. And one benefit of having the city take the lead on this as opposed to the DNR, you know, we can, we can work with, you know, the Parks Committee as well as other local organizations to kind of steer where we want the trail to go. You know, there's obviously going to be a number of bicyclists in 18 years that come through town, and we'd like to take as much advantage of that as possible and bring it through our community where we can.
I'm in favor of it, too. I've been working on this trail for eight years. It was good to see the support of the council. A lot of you guys showed up. It was a good event and I hope you went away with a clearer vision of what was trying to be done there. And it was a good day. Stuck my one four-wheeler, marrying one out of his left wheel. It's kind of hard to keep it on the trail, but it was a good day.
Any other questions or concerns before--
What is it doing, going around Limburg State Park or something?
Actually, those are on Limburg State Park and they're talking about bringing it through to the State Park right now. There's a section there, and I don't know exactly where that's at, but a section that was donated with the Limburg House itself, that's historical, but then they acquired additional property after that. So they will have to do a number of, you know, cultural resource studies into there and the Limburg site itself is off limits, but the additional property that they've acquired, they have indicated that they might be willing to allow it to go through there.
There's just not enough right-of-way along the road--
Correct.
--that they could disturb.
Correct.
Well, I think it'd be great to have you involved because from what I'd heard in the past, unsubstantiated was that, you know, the DNR was going to tell us where it was going to go through the falls. And so for us to have that input--
Correct.
--I think that would be great.
The reason we were pushing non-DNR control is so we could tell them where we want it, but if you talk to the DNR, they want our input, so they're going to put it basically what works for Little Falls. If we could get some money and not take it out of Little Falls coffers, I think that would be a good, good thing.
No serious objections, move forward. Sounds good, okay. Up next, transportation alternative grants, something against projects.
We received a notice that the transportation alternatives is under solicitation. It's a grant that allows, it allows people to go after federal funds for various items, mainly trails, sidewalks, and improvements for safe routes to school. And the item that I'm looking at right now would be three rapid flashers at the schools, so one at the Middle School, one at the Mary Vlaard Middle School, and then one at Lincoln School on the west side. Again, all of these would be along 27, but that would be the improvements we would have there. I'd be looking at potentially a trail along Pine Avenue with the soccer fields and the baseball complex coming over here. I can see this trail getting to be used quite a bit for the kids to get over to the new complex. On the west side, this is Lincoln School down at the bottom. We have one block of sidewalk right here, but then it, there's a space in there where we don't have a sidewalk, then you have Lincoln School. So we'd like to fill that stretch in. And then on the northeast side of town, you've got Limburg on this corner down here, 27 coming across, and then we'd like to add a sidewalk here. This is where our crossing flashers are currently at. We don't have a sidewalk on the north side of the 27. So we'd like to fill that stretch in all the way up to Fort Avenue, so kids that are walking home, you know, these towns or the houses up there, have a safe place to walk. There is a minimum 20% match for these projects. There's roughly $600,000 project cost. One thing to note, this is for fiscal year 2021, so they do project out for five years. If this is something that we wanted to do earlier, I mean, there is a chance that we could build it sooner and then get paid back in 2021, but that's getting ahead of ourselves. So right now, on the regular agenda, you'll see that we are looking for approval to submit the letter of intent, basically telling the Regional Development Committee that we do want to apply for these grants in our product amount of $600,000. They'll take a cursory look at it and then we'll do the full application after that.
Questions for Greg?
I don't think that's a page here.
On the north up here?
Yeah, south side of Pine Avenue.
Correct, yep.
That's how high they travel the road if it's only going to get to be more once those ball fields go in there. That no concerns me the way it is. And sort of get the kids out there ultimately would be great.
Correct.
I think it's a good idea.
What's so expensive about that path? When we were talking, right off the top of my head, the price of full infrastructure on two full city blocks, right?
Well, that's more than a couple of full city blocks, but it's--
Why not? But we're--
Couple things you have to--
Forty-eight and twice?
Ten feet.
Okay.
You have to have a full trail width, which is 10 feet. You have to project out to the 2021 costs, so you're projecting today what it's going to cost in 2021, so that adds inflation to it. You know, and then you've got sidewalks down over here that obviously add to it as well.
And would it be adjacent to the street or would there be a space between the trail and the street?
There'd be a space, depending on if we have enough right-of-way, but I would like to put closer to the right, so we do have that space. When you have it right up adjacent to the road, whenever you cause snow, it compacts right out there and it's difficult to keep it even open. Plus, if anyone's biking along there, it's safer, you know, if you've got a five, six-year-old kid that's riding. A grass space is nice to have in case they decide to be wrapped to the side and they can follow in the grass as opposed to the blacked out.
Do you purchase any right-of-way to do this or is that all there?
We're not anticipating any right-of-way on any of these. We've got full right-of-way on all of them, so we're not, we're not anticipating right-of-way purchasing.
It's like this path that's right over there. It seems like a safer way for people to get to town. Well, that's on the highway there, that's continuous all the time, always people walking down there. That's just a great continuation of that whole area. Look at south at all? I mean, I don't want to apply on the $600,000, but I see a lot of people on Hilton Road and same type bikes, walking their dogs.
In order to qualify for this grant, you have to show the transportation component of it. So people are walking from A to B. You can, you can make that argument here, they're the owner of the ball fields. Here, you know, it's in the Safe Girls to School, Boys and Girls Club, same way with the Limburg School. If it's just a trail along a busy road, it's harder to make that transportation argument just because most of it's for recreation. And obviously, we know there is going to be a recreation component into it, but you also have to be able to show what that transportation component is.
Any other questions? That's on the regular--
That's on the regular agenda tonight, yes.
Right now, move on, garbage discussions, John?
Okay, give us a second to switch over the factors. Okay. Well, over the past few months, we've been meeting with our existing haulers and based on the council's direction, earlier this year, we had some, we're moving forward with that renegotiating, trying to add the third hauler. So where we started, we had direction to move away from the bag system into a garbage can or wheeled cart that gets hauled out to the, to the edge of the street and adding the third hauler to the route, which would eliminate the need for the colored bags. When we started this discussion, some of the challenges that came up, if we moved to the, away from the bag system, the existing haulers and the trucks that they use don't pick up the carts with the sidearm lift, they either have to be rolled to the back where there's a lift or else manually dumped into the back of the truck, which adds a lot of time and energy and just operational costs to picking up the system that way. So like, if we did add that, they'd all likely to add a sidearm collection if they're going to make their operations more cost-effective. Otherwise, it's going to be quite an additional expense to convert to that system without having that upgrade, too. Granted that it can't pay for itself over time, but it's just another additional kind of challenge to overcome in this next negotiation. So with adding a third hauler, too, you're reducing the operational revenue for the other two haulers, so that was always, that was going to be a challenge as well. But we did come to an agreement. So right now, we do have an agreement with the three, with the two existing haulers and the third, that they would divvy up the town three ways. City sanitary would have the west side of town plus the area that is west of the railroad tracks on the east side of the river. So this is the golf course, St. Joseph Lane, Golf Road, Edge Water, Garden Drive, as well as areas in the South Oaks addition and properties within the city limits along Hilton Road and I believe there's one on Thomas Drive. And there's, I think, Carter Lane and a couple others there. So it's a, it's less than 100 customers, but it is one area that we need to, to kind of balance out the split so that each hauler is losing about the same amount to go to the third additional hauler. O'Treba Disposal would have all of the city on the east side of the river, north of Highway 27, and Bob Lamier would have the south, that's what we're calling the southeast portion of the city, which is the area south of Highway 27 on the east side of the river, with the exception of the golf course. Part of the discussion was moving to where the city could take on the, paying the cost of the tipping fees. The haulers came to the, came to, with an offer that they would keep that as part of the, so in the component that we pay right now for what we call the drive-by fee, that does include, part of that money is utilized by the haulers to pay tipping fee in addition to the bag revenue that they get to pay for, for some of that cost. So if it is, you know, if they are shorted, but now without bags and revenue that they could generate from the bags, we would need to cover that, that whole tipping fee cost. So one other piece, we've moved to having a uniform cart size garbage can with wheels, so called cart, likely around 65 gallons. Would equate roughly to about two of our garbage bags now could fit within that, that can. So it is, it does provide an additional amount of garbage that people could send out each week that they're getting their cost covered for. Now, any excess garbage that can't fit within the can, we could set up a system to pay for that garbage in excess. We could use the existing bags that we currently have. We buy bag tags that we can, we can put on so that anybody can put out any garbage bag they want. It just needs to have a colored tag that notes that this, they paid the, they paid extra for this. We understand it's, it's weight that's going to the landfill that needs to be compensated for haulers that, that are taking that out there. So we could, we can definitely figure out a way to do that. You know, so likely what we want to see is everybody, if we can get the lid to close, and that's the amount that you can send out to the curb every week when it goes to get picked up. The rate at which we compensate the haulers would be $14 per customer per month, and that does include a portion that we are, we're identifying as drive-by fee as well as what we've estimated in the amount that each resident on average has for weight that we sent to the landfill. So there's, with that $14, the haulers have agreed that they would keep that flat for the first three years of a 10-year contract. However, that doesn't include a portion of that $14 that accounts for the landfill tipping fees. The landfill tipping fees are set by the county and they typically have been going up. I haven't seen them in, in history where they've gone down. So those fees are going up, so as those fees go up, they would, a portion of that fee would be raised in accordance with that. So it isn't the intent that the haulers are going to profit off of that increase, it's just to cover their cost. So then, any increases or decreases after the first three years? We would work on negotiating those currently. We have a system that changes it based on the Consumer Price Index or transportation that we've seen over the last 12 years or so that we've been calculating this. It swings up and down quite a lot, however, on average, it's about a 2% increase. So if we can just conclude that we've seen historically 2% cost increase in this, in this field, you know, for haulers, we can, we could probably negotiate on a year-to-year basis what that, what that increase for the drive-by fee is going to be to cover their So, bottom line, how will this impact our rates? So like, what you see in the middle column there under current utility bill, this is what we currently have, what people see on their utility bill. For garbage is $6.56, recycling is $2.95, the admin fee that we collect is $2.10, and then the sales tax, which is 9.75% on the drive-by fee, is $0.64. So what that doesn't include on your utility bill is how much money you pay each week in garbage, or each month in garbage bags. So if you calculate it out, the $1.42 that you spend on each individual bag and average that out as one bag per week, the monthly amount that you spend on that, on having bags is $6.15. So that comes out to about $18.40 that you pay each month for garbage and recycling services. So moving to the can system, eliminating the bags, the haulers' amounts do go up, but now we have cans, we have three haulers, you know, they have the challenges that they have to overcome and-- You know, they have the challenges that they have to overcome and the operational expenses that they're going to be raised doing this system versus doing the bag system. The recycling fee right now is, we're keep, it's the same, but just for comparison purposes, we're keeping the same. That contract's going to be up for negotiation. Two, the garbage recycling admin fee that goes up by one dollar and that dollar is used to pay for the can. And that is on the assumption that that can will be paid off over a five-year period. So the cost of the can plus a little bit of sales tax that we need to collect to pay to the state comes out to about a dollar for that payment. So then the drive-by fee, sales tax also goes up in accordance because that has to be applied to the fourteen dollars. So it's a dollar thirty-seven versus the sixty-four cents. So that is an increase of three dollars and one cent, about sixteen percent increase in the, in the base charge for what you can see before. Now, if you are a light garbage user, this is going to be more, much more expensive than what you're accustomed to. If you're at one bag, yes, it is an increase, but now you're moving to a can system, that's a big advantage. If you look below in the doll, one and a half bags per week. So you put out more, you know, you got twice a month where you're putting out two garbage bags, you're breaking even. If you put out two garbage bags a week, what you can likely fit into the can and getting the lid closed, you're actually going to be paying less money. So likely you can't fit more than two garbage bags in there, so it's no need to calculate what that cost would be. It's, it doesn't matter. You're going to have to pay for that as an excess charge. Are there any questions?
John, how did this compare to what the neighborhood communities?
So what we, we have seen some present, amounts presented from other communities. We're definitely in line with what they're paying when you actually look at the, we weren't accounting for recycling in those, some of those comparisons. The lowest I was seeing is around fifteen dollars, all the way up to twenty-five dollars per month for those garbage services. So if you're, you know, if you're out in the private, if you have a contract with a private hauler, you're not paying, very unlikely around here that you're paying less than twenty dollars a month. If you are, it's probably going to be through a waste management, but they're just going to jack up on it in a couple of years because that's what they probably operate. So, you know, we're, we're right in line with that when you factor, factor in the cost. That, that drive-by fee cost, I think, is comparable to what, what we've seen. So in my community, for that can, that quarter, we were around fourteen dollars a month. We did not have the, the recycling fee was calculated separate and we didn't have an admin fee that we, we had packed on there. But the sales tax was about the same.
John, is that two-ten admin fees? All that necessary for garbage recycling? Do we use that much in there?
We use, we use a lot of it. There's, Lauren and I spoke today about that. There's about ten thousand in there a year that we don't, we don't use that as, as an excess. So we would need to collect the full, the dollar for the can because there's sales tax and all that we have to pay back. There's also sales tax in, in, while we had to pay the sales tax on the garbage bags and there's other fees that we calculate out that we have to reimburse, you know, that we're reimbursing ourselves and managing this utility fund as well too. So, so it's really pretty close. Not a lot of them to.
So it's not just labor? There, there's other stuff that goes along into it?
Yeah.
Could you figure that out? The seventy thousand dollars a year that's a full-time person just doing garbage recycling?
What we use it for, I mean, we use it to pay one fourth of the postage, one fourth of the cost of the bills themselves. You know, all that kind of stuff that we send out the bills, we send out the late notices. We have to buy the bills, we buy the late notices, those types of things, audit fees.
There's material costs in there.
Yes, so I know it's definitely not all that much.
Fund has to pay for, it's, there's, you know, some other tertiary fees that we have. The state has, they calculate as part of our admin fee a sales tax. That, so if we're charging an admin fee, they're going to take a portion of that and call it and try to recruit some of it, which is what, is that that nine point seven five percent as well? So ten percent of what we charge, we have to send back to the state. So it's, there is a lot of arguments we have that that admin fee is, is necessary.
The other thing is we do have our score grant, but we also offer a spring and fall leaf and brush collection. And we have the appliance and curbside garbage and recycling appliance pickup. And although we have score funds to do that, we don't always get enough score fund money to pay for that. So then, you know, we'll use some of our admin fee to supplement that we need to.
Lauren, you asked about the cost of the can. We do have a quote that has it around just under fifty dollars. So likely that's about what that can cost would have when we add any freight to it as well. I am looking at multiple potential options for the cans, trying to find the best quality of can and the best price, the best warranty. There's a few vendors that I've seen ten and twelve-year warranties on cans. So likely, if we can get ten-year lifespan out of those cans, if they're warranted for that long, then maybe that can cost could come down a little bit. Because what we're doing is we're spreading that cost out every month for five years, or in this, in this estimate. If we can expect to get ten years out of it and we know it's, and we know it's warranted, that the company is going to say if one breaks, they'll replace it. Then I'd say we can lower that a little bit, but it's not going to come, it's not going to come down a lot with only a one dollar per month.
If a can gets damaged, who pays for that? Do we just give them a new can or do we?
We would, hopefully if it's in the warranty period, we're giving them, we're getting it, we're taking it back. We get it warranted, we give them a can.
So everybody would be using a can, won't be any bags?
There won't be any bags except for access that can't fit in a can each week.
The only part I don't like is those who use under a bag.
Yeah.
They're paying more. I mean, I like the other part because I use two bags a week, so I'm getting a good deal.
Yeah.
Still, if you're using less, you're not.
Yeah, and you're not, you know, my experience with this, we had a can system in the community that I was at before. My experience was that people that didn't fill up their can and they were comfortable with leaving the can, sit by the side of the garage or wherever they kept it and, you know, that was secure, didn't haul it out to the curb every week. They would just do it until, wait until it was full, even though they were paying for that service anyways. And then luckily utility, there was nothing that told them that they couldn't, you know, they saved any money. They just, that was the way they operated. I know when I was living by myself and doing the same thing, I didn't haul it out every, every week when it wasn't full and the smell wasn't an issue. Now, I was a half kid, diapers, it's going out every week, guarantee of that.
Is that posted up on the street?
No, no. This would also entail us to make some ordinance modifications. So right now, or how we operated it before, and this is something else that I would look for to us to implement, is that the cans are only picked up on the street. On all, you know, everywhere in the street where it's, where it's feasible. I mean, there might be some areas in town where it isn't feasible to be picked up on the street. But the cans go out by six P M. the night, or can go out after six P M. the night before the pickup and they need to be back in by six P M. the day after they're picked up. It should leave plenty of time for people to get the cans out and back. In five and a half years with that system, I had one, one issue where there was one person that didn't pull the can back, back in. That I had to write a letter, put in a letter, tell him, explain to him what was going on. They stopped me. It was, people got accustomed to doing it that way. They're, if you leave your can out there, the wind's going to knock it down, it's going to blow, it's going to go into the street. I mean, nobody wants that. They want to keep that can that they, they have and keep it functioning. Especially if their negligence is breaking the can and bringing the charge in for replacement.
Yeah, none of these cans stand up to the level of drought.
Very good. Yeah. These are, the ones that we, I've had experience with are excellent. In that winter, we, they even get up on the, you know, you've got huge snow piles built up on the boulevards and you have to shovel a spot to keep your can in there so that they can go by in the street and pick it up. And then, you know, they set it down, there'd be howling winds, they blow and roll into the street. I've never had a broken can. I'd say that doesn't happen, certainly can, but if they're warranted and they, they know that they're coming to Minnesota, they make sure they're high quality.
Especially if you put it there and maybe four snow and snowfall comes through and that's going to kind of bust it up a bit.
But you're not parking them in the street, you gotta keep them off the road.
You gotta be on the curb, but it's, snow, snow from the snowfall ends up on the boulevard.
Are you saying, speaking generically, boys, it'll be the alley in the whole part of town?
No, I'm saying streets in most circumstances.
Okay.
It's, it, we had an alley pickup, but in the wintertime, we had to move it to the street. I think just in terms of an operational equity for everyone, it's just street where it's, the street makes the most sense. We have alleys in town that don't run parallel to one another. Makes it more challenging to say, if this section, this little section here is going to be alley pickup, this section's going to be street pickup, this section's going to be back to alley. I think if we generalize it to street, all streets all the time. Where it works, I know there's a couple areas, maybe along the highways where you can't do it on the street. Think that might be the best, but it's certainly something.
Eggs we seem to get by just fine now where I have an alley and so, but on the other side of the street, the houses are where they don't have an alley and so they put it out at the end of their driveway.
See the issue with the, with the alley pickups, all low-hanging cables and that stuff too?
Yeah, now you have, yeah, now you have a sidearm that lifts the can over the truck and dumps it into the, into the, over, into the top, not into the back. If you do that on the side, pickups. Doesn't extend too far over, but it is a little bit higher than what current trucks are now. Also, this still spare wear and tear on the outlets.
Get into the details, but they have backup to go on that page. They're not going out in the air. If I got to haul my can all the way from the alley to the street, I guess I'd haul my can all the way from the alley to the street. Yeah, but have garages on the alley and keep the can in the garage. That would be kind of a big, I wouldn't bring it out of that garage.
I'll give you a prime example. In my house that I had in my previous community, I had garage side outlets. And I had garbage pickup in the summertime on the alley. And then in the winter, I had moved to the street, I pulled the can all the way around and kept it in front of my house just because it was, I wasn't going to drag it all the way through my yard, through my entire lot, through all the snow every week. I just kept it out in the front in the wintertime when we moved to street pickup. So likely if I was street all the time, I probably would have kept the can out in front. But that would, that would have been my current, current.
How many people have got to scratch street side garages that have to drag yours to the alley and all are doing the opposite?
Well, the amount of labor to handle it on the tip was, was pretty crazy when we did the survey on that. But if we made some of that from other haulers, we could probably process that. If they don't have the garbage cans sitting right, do you leave them?
If it's, if it's not.
Right where they can pick it up with an arm?
Yeah.
It's got to be a certain way, otherwise the garbage is all going to fall.
It's got to be close enough to the curb where they can, they can.
But it's got to be facing the right way also.
Yes, and facing the right direction.
Mine's got to be shut.
Yeah.
Do you put a little pad out there, cement pad, that it sits on to keep it level?
If you're so choosy, can you wanted to do that to your own?
But we're putting it in the.
In the boulevard, in the right of way, yeah. No, I don't think we'll be pouring pads for it on the.
Well, their own.
If you, you as a resident wanted to. I'd say within two feet.
Recyclables will still stay the same?
Recyclables, right now, the, the plan is to keep that the same term in that contract. We're not looking at tech news, but where there's some things in the works in the Rainier area potentially about a new facility. So I think there's just some potential for maybe a single sort mixed stream recycling. We're going to keep that optional thing.
All three haulers are satisfied with this?
Yep, they've all agreed.
Plus going to a system like this, where they're pretty much getting the same, you know, those who like canisters and who are paying somebody from out of the community to come in, we might cut down some of that unless roadwear. Because they're getting a pretty good deal through the city, why would they pay somebody else to haul about the same amount?
Service that they're, is the same, so I don't, it wouldn't make sense to me then. If that was all, you know, the reason you did that was to get a can.
Yeah.
Get a can picked up, but, well, you're getting a can picked up now, so yes, you have to pay for it. Any other questions?
You know, the one thing would be for, you know, a lot of our senior citizens, they may have a concern with that price increase. We've talked about that with water and sewer, but it's, it's something pretty fragile for some folks. This is a sizable increase for people that don't put that much work into it. That was, I mean, that's a concern to all of us, the direction that was kind of given to us, to the city.
Unless the, unless the haulers could go to a truck that weighed the can every single time we got it picked up and we had a system to keep track of that, like we do with water and water meters and whatnot, maybe can come up with a really fair and equitable system. I know the technology's out there, but I don't know where that falls in terms of cost and change the laws and feasibility for us.
This is, this is a ten-year contract.
I guess this would be a ten-year contract, yeah.
And the other way, you probably get some increases in service through the years anyway. So probably bring it up to that point anyway, so. We're not losing, you know, it looks like three dollars and one cent, right? But in reality, it's maybe going to pretty much, well, it's frozen for three years.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we're in a weird, we're also too in a weird point with this current billing rate because we just saw a eight percent decrease based on that transportation C P I from the previous year. So you're seeing a, a pretty low, low drive-by fee, you know, that we have. Plus, we've had even more of that garbage and recycling admin money. It's going to have to go to the state because we have a solid waste tax audit that told us that we weren't calculating that fee out currently, which I tend to disagree with their methodology on how they calculate that. It's, it is a, it's a pretty low cost system right now, which I don't think is good to say here. I don't think, if we were trying to renegotiate with the current rate, that, that drive-by fee would be higher than everything else.
Well, this is twenty-one forty-five, that's garbage.
So I, I think what people, the sticker shack people are really going to see is going to be what they think on the utility bill, thinking it went up nine dollars, but the clear-cut message is, hey, you pay for that garbage bag too. You have to be able to account for that in terms of what this overall cost is because now you don't have that. Like, if you're a heavy bag user, it can actually be to your benefit.
No, there's a few places in town where they have boarding houses and transition houses. And you see there's six, seven, eight bags out there. Do they pay a higher drive-by fee or the same as anyone else?
They pay the same.
But on this system, they're going to have to have more than one container. They're going to have to.
We could build in a billing system to have one container. However, they're going to be charged for it. Hopefully they're not paying for a single container going through.
Or they could pay the excess daily.
Or they could just get. Or they could just get the pay, 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 pay the excess. I, I do wanna, I do wanna thank the haulers too. You know, this was not an easy, easy thing to talk, talk about. Change is hard, so I really do appreciate them coming to the table and having these difficult conversations with us about the system. We wanted to make it better and, you know, it was gonna come with some sacrifice on both parts. So, I think we, we moved in that right direction and I hope that it comes and appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Can't you and Tony to finish up?
Yep. I'll, I'll grab them in the contract. Hard part.
Anything else before we move on? Budget meetings, John?
Yes, I believe last year we had a budget work session, a couple of them scheduled for early part of November. That final week in October is actually fifth Monday week, so, you know, Monday's Halloween, so I think we wanna stay out of that date. But the first, second, or third in the evenings, you know, by five-thirty time, work for, work for anyone? Is there days that we should avoid? Trying to schedule maybe two meetings, if we can get through everything in, in one meeting to do that. But I think we should set a couple of dates.
Second day working till nine, if that's what you said. The second day working till nine early, if that's what you said, I'll try and trade with somebody.
Wednesdays are usually, we're doing church nights too, right? That's what our day?
Yeah, I typically stay away from a Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, okay? Means a, my, my number or change.
I can't have the first.
I can't have the Thursday. On Thursday, first, first, okay.
Tuesday, first.
So, third, probably set the first one at...
That's a Wednesday.
That's a Thursday, Thursday, November.
Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine, Wednesday.
Third, what time?
Uh, five-thirty.
Third, we're at, that's fine.
And we'll, I mean, we'll do our best to, to power through that. If we need to schedule another day, maybe we'd look at the following week. Yes, for the, for the actual setting of the one. This is just informational meeting, covered on it, where we're gonna have all the budget numbers correct that week.
Five-thirty?
Yep, on the third. I did want to also announce there is a comprehensive economic development plan that's sponsored and created by the Region Five Development Commission. I attended one of their meetings here a few weeks ago. They had a request for some proposals or for projects to include in that plan that they likely could get some funding for and help subsidize the cost for something that may have some regional impact. I went ahead and applied to do our feasibility study for the bridge, the twenty-seventh bridge, to include that in the project. Is potential having some impact to that? They did their project planning session a couple of weeks ago and we were actually selected as the tenth and final project to be listed in the plan. So, not to say that that guarantees us funding, but it gives us a, a funding resource potentially utilized for the feasibility of the plan. So, there's some follow-up to do, a white paper on, on what the, more of the feasibility study to do to be eligible for funding, but it is on the list, so...
Thank you. Anyone else got anything? We'll adjourn to seven-thirty for regular meeting.